I would like to advise all those present that notice this regular meeting of October 19th, 2022, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk, and with the Jersey Journal, and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk, and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on October 17th, 2022. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Present.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Oh, one, let's get back here, is a resolution postponing second reading and final passage of an ordinance entitled in ordinance referring, referring the plan redevelopment plan to the planning board for the consistency review for the redevelopment of the property located at 69-73 Lufanti Way, and adopting said redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Who would like to move it?
Ed, we're going to carry this to the next meeting?
Yeah, you're moving the resolution to carry it to the November meeting.
Yes.
Who would like to second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, two, is an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 35, zoning regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held September 21st, 2022, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 19th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 35, zoning regulations. And as the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Ms. Kodeski.
Gail Kodeski, H28 Kennedy Boulevard, can somebody explain this to me, please? What exactly does this mean?
So, this is for parking. It's a schedule of parking space regulations that is a requirement of minimum spaces per the type of building.
So, what type of building is it referring to?
So, it's for efficiency apartments. In other words, there's one minimum space per dwelling unit. There's a whole, can we get a copy? Would you like a copy of this?
Well, I would like to know now what you're approving.
Sure. I'm going to tell you now, but I can give you a copy.
You know, the sad thing is, Ms. La Palusa, that at the caucus meeting, caucuses are primarily to discuss ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. But at your caucus meetings, everybody's head is down, nobody's giving any explanation. It would make it a lot easier for us, who come here, to ask questions if we knew ahead of time exactly what the ordinance means. And you could discuss it at the caucus meeting, which would save all of us a lot of time when we go to the regular meeting. So, I would like to know specifically, give me an example.
Okay. Ms. Kodeski, so if there's a one-bedroom apartment, the minimum space is one space for parking.
And what is it?
Two bedrooms is one and a quarter, three bedrooms is one and a half. Senior citizen housing, minimum spaces is half per dwelling unit.
Why is that? Why are we taking parking spaces away from residents that live here? Especially seniors?
You're misunderstanding. This is off-street parking spaces that have to be allowed for that specific building.
Why are we making a senior citizen only a half a space? It doesn't make any sense. They're the ones that need the parking space closest to their homes.
This is the minimum requirements, and this says senior citizen housing. A lot of those people, I would say even the majority of them, don't require a parking space.
I disagree with you. I just feel like you're taking parking spaces away from the residents. Thank you.
I beg to differ. We're not taking anything away. We're actually making minimum requirements.
Make my signal, I just have a question. This says planning for, requirement for industrial uses, so apartments are listed as industrial uses.
Where does it say industrial uses?
Am I number one?
No.
Oh, two?
Oh, two. It's, that contains, that pertains to the cannabis parking and all of that, and different areas. It includes the industrial and residential.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it should say industrial and residential as well.
I guess, I'm sorry, council president, could we get some clarification? So, Ms. Kodeski did bring up a good point. Is it that we are instilling a requirement for a minimum number of spaces that was not there previously? Or are we reducing that requirement? I think that clarification probably is what we're looking for.
When we talk about minimum, okay, some of these, there is no change. This is how the ordinance already read. So, we're not taking things away from the people, but sometimes if you don't put a minimum in, you don't have something specific that these developers will have to build for. And that's the reason why we do these ordinances for parking. So, manufacturing, laboratory, warehousing establishments, and truck terminals, so it says each 200 employees or of 1,000 square feet, which is greater, and they need one parking spot per 1,000 square feet, and that's the only change that's happening in this ordinance.
And that's correct, and that's how I read it also.
So, it is, but it, but I was explaining all of the things that were in the ordinance, Ms. Kodeski.
So, wait, I do think if it's helpful, we could certainly get a copy of this, of the ordinance that outlines the minimum number per category, which, there's no objection to this going out, right?
This is public record.
It's public record. So, we can, we can hand this.
We can give this to anybody. Ms. Kodeski, if you had a question at the caucus, we'd gladly get you a copy of this.
Okay, anybody else? And I will take a motion to close the hearing.
Move. Second.
And on the motion to close the hearing, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, three, is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 35, zoning regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held September 21st, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 19th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilman Perez giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 35, zoning regulations. The council president is now ready to, is, the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Ms. Kodeski.
Again, what's, explain this, please?
So, there used to be a parking deficiency schedule, which would allow people who were, let's say, to add on to their house, they would have a minimum requirement of parking to provide. But if they added on to their house and they were locked in, there's no way they could add to the parking. But what we're doing is, it's, that's kind of unfair to the people who live around there. So, you were able to pay money even though you couldn't meet the parking requirement. That's what a parking deficiency schedule, a fee schedule, did. We're taking that fee schedule out, so that if you don't have the minimum requirement for the parking, you cannot just park on the street and pay a fee for it.
So, we're losing money? The city is losing revenue?
So, no, but we're, we're preserving the parking for the neighbors, for the neighborhood.
But the, the city is still losing money. I mean, we have, Ms. La Palusa, you live in...
The money was minimal. It's a one-time charge, and we get more complaints about parking than anything. Everything is not dollars and cents.
I understand that, but the bottom line is, we all know that parking in this town is terrible. Double parking's causing accident after accident.
But that's, has nothing to do with this.
Well, it, it does, because we have no parking, period. We're growing and we don't...
So, we wouldn't allow somebody to add a floor on to their house and put extra parking in that one location, and allow them to pay a one-time fee and have extra parking on that block.
So, if somebody wants to take their porch away and put a carport in, you're not allowing that?
No, that's different. If you already have a parking space, you're allowed to have a parking space. But if you add a third or a fourth floor on, now you have more people living there.
Right.
And those people were able to pay a one-time fee, sometimes $500, one time, and then be allowed to just park however many they wanted on the street. Do you understand? So, now we're saying, if you're going to add, you have to have the parking. You can't just pay the deficiency fee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No protest against objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passes had been filed with me. I'll take a motion to close.
Move it.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, four, is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 3, police regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held September 21st, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of October 19th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution by, moved by Councilmember Perez, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
A second.
And on second reading, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 3, police regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Just state your name and address for me, please.
How you doing? Matt Cottington, 280 Avenue C. Just received a permit to carry through the state, so I just want to clear things up with where you can't carry. I know a lot of people are receiving them right now. There's a massive influx of them. A lot of people are calling me, asking me, maybe I could help these people out, but telling them where they can't carry. So, can you clarify where municipal buildings, properties would be?
So, it just says, the ordinance is for public buildings. We have many public buildings, obviously. Public buildings, I can give you some examples. I don't know if I'll cover them all, but schools, obviously, are a public building. Anything under the jurisdiction of the Bayonne Board of Ed. Obviously, City Hall, the library, public places like that. Do you need more of a clarification?
So, a lot of them do make sense. City Hall, I mean, it's a police precinct. Everyone, you know, there's plenty of security here. Schools, makes sense. Actually, a state law, can't carry a firearm in a school, even though there's 32 states that allow teachers to carry, to protect themselves and their students. It is what it is. It's a state law. As far as parks, that's where I raise my concern. Just a few months ago, we had two shootings. We had one in Hudson County Park, we had one down Gorman's Field. Why did my rights stop at the park? You know, I mean, I bring my niece, my nephew, other family members down there. Is that something where I would lock the gun in the vehicle? You know, it kind of, it leaves a lot of liability. You know, as a responsible firearm owner, these are the things I do want to know.
So, we also have county park, obviously. This ordinance says, under the jurisdiction of the city of Bayonne. So, I don't know about the county of Hudson. I don't know if...
Yeah, I know Hudson County is a county property.
Chief.
It was just an example of two parks, for instance, you know? But like Gorman's Field, 16th Street.
Again, anything under the jurisdiction of Bayonne, which those parks would be?
Right.
It would be prohibited.
Listen, I can't argue it. City of Bayonne owns it. If you come to my house with a firearm, and I tell you, you can't come in, you can't come in. It's my property. I just wanted to know why, where, stuff like that.
Right. So, we would have to do a little research, I'm sure we could find it, to see if the county already has some sort of ordinance.
Gotcha.
They may have that already, so then, even though it doesn't come before this board for approval, it may already be in place. I don't know. We'd have to do a little research.
Correct.
But part of the county park, if you go down that ramp on 48th Street, to the right is Ruckowski Park, which is the city of Bayonne, too. So, I just wanted to point that out.
But last question, you know?
Sure.
Let's just say you're driving, you have this permit, you get redirected through a park traffic, something's going on with Boulevard, you get pulled over for something. I mean, you know, I, I know a lot of this is new to everyone, so, and hopefully it gets cleared up soon, but that's kind of where the concern is.
Yeah, again, I can't answer what a police officer would do if you...
Right, right.
You know, what you would do in your car if you got redirected, you know?
A lot of it is up to the discretion of the officer.
But it is, I'm sure it's up to the discretion of the police, and...
Gotcha.
But anything under the jurisdiction, and it's clear in here, in the ordinance, so, you know, the county, I can, maybe I could find out if you want to give me your number.
I totally, yeah. Listen, I, you know, I've just been waiting a year, so I figured I'd ask.
All right.
But thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at this point, I'll take a motion to close the hearing on this portion of the ordinance.
So, move.
And on the closing hearing, Mr. Booker?
Real quick, I just want to add on to the gentleman, what he's saying about Forrest. Listen, we're going to look forward to at least putting out that information, where everybody can understand where they can and cannot carry. You can understand, this is basically for the safety of the community, given the present circumstances around the country. So, this is not to restrict anybody from their rights of carrying, it's just to keep the citizens in a safe... I understand what's been happening recently, but we're going to try to publicize, so people are more aware where they can carry their weapons.
And the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And at this point, we have an amendment to the resolution that will require additional public hearing at the meeting of November 9th, and it is including a portion into the ordinance as section number three, any duly appointed or off-duty law enforcement. It adds more to it, that requires more discussion. So, with that, I'll take a motion to amend the resol, ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Second.
And on the motion to amend the ordinance, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And now, our favorite part, our public speakers.
Good evening again. First, I would like to wish all the children and kids at heart in the city of Bayonne a happy and safe Halloween. I know it's trick-or-treat time, and maybe the city will give us, give us the taxpayer a little treat when we get our final tax bill this year, as they did run on stabilizing taxes. Also, November 11th is Veterans Day, a day we tribute, give tribute to all American veterans, both living and deceased. Let us all remember them as we give thanks for, for them and their service to our country. October is Breast Cancer Month. Let's send our prayers and love to all those that are currently fighting this terrible disease, and give thanks to all the caregivers, supporters, including survivors, who assist them and their families during this time. I see we got pink lights outside, how about some pink ribbons around the trees? That would be nice. I'm sorry, counsel, I'm going to be going over my five minutes, because again, I ask for office hours, nobody responds. So, this is the only time I have to voice my concerns. Nobody responds to your question in writing, other than Mr. Coffee, once in a while, and he's not even a council member. Ms. Weimer answers once in a while as well, but she says she'll get back to you with more information, but apparently, there's no information to give. Now, I am by no means a city planner, or profess to understand the reasoning behind all this building taking place. Some of it, yes, others not so much. But what I do know is that the administration makes certain decisions which are approved before and after the technical review committee meeting. Then, of course, it goes to either zoning or planning, or the engineer, et cetera. But what I am is a born and bred Bayonite, and a taxpayer. Most importantly, I am a concerned citizen. Therefore, I am hereby, as a concerned citizen, condemning our infrastructure. This includes roads, bridges, water, sewer, as they are areas of condemnation and in need of redevelopment. Counsel, think, just think. We have a real issue here, and we need a solution. I don't know which one of you said it, or if it came from the corner office, but during speeches, someone said, "This is for our future." There won't be a future if we don't start focusing on the infrastructure of this town. And this is not the first time I've said that at a meeting. I've said it many times. You want to improve the development that comes past your plates. I guess you don't have voices of your own. Just because someone else approves it, doesn't necessarily mean you have to vote yes and bring it to fruition. As a reminder, infrastructure is the physical systems of a city that are needed to operate, such things as health, safety, zoning, public morals, behaviors, general welfare, speed limits, transportation. I could go on and on, roads, bridges, schools. But there you are. I am sure I have missed some items. We have ordinances to help with this, and back in September 2018, we did a bonding for the Aqueduct for $11,700,000. I'd like to know what's happening with that bond. Is it still valid? Is it sitting somewhere for four years? To refresh everybody's memory, the ordinance number is 0-18-52, and it was put into law on September 12th, 2018. So, when you say all this building is for the future, we're not going to have a future if we don't fix all these issues first. These pipes are over 100 years old, bridges are on the brink of collapse, or have already been taken down. Keep building more and more and putting more pressure on them, and more people move, as more people move into the city. Let's set priorities.
Ms. Kodeski, please try and wrap it up.
I guess current-day citizens, Gail, let me finish.
Please try and wrap it up.
I guess current-day citizens don't really matter as much as the future. Traffic, double parking, causing accidents, and not having safety certificates at construction sites that have cranes. We have an ordinance for that. Why do we have ordinances if they're not enforced? Some construction workers are wearing hard hats, others are not. For the future, are you waiting for someone to get killed before fixing a bridge, or making certain things certified? You keep telling me that the 32nd Street Bridge and the 25th Street Walk Bridge had to go through a safety thing.
There's rules about speaking for five minutes as well, that you don't follow.
Landscapers clogging sewers with their leaves that people pay to have them picked up?
Thank you.
Counsel, with all due respect, does this make any sense? Does it make any sense? Ordinances are there for a reason, need to be enforced, and they need to be utilized. We need people in the proper positions to ensure these issues are taken care of. Stakeholders. True stakeholders.
Ms. Kodeski, I let you have extra time. I asked you to wrap it up. Please wrap it up.
Now, the purpose of the caucus meeting is to discuss agenda items. At the last caucus meeting, nobody spoke except Madam Clerk. All she did was read. She read every item. A caucus meeting, it would save time here if you explained everything that's on the agenda, so we know what's going on before we even get here. It's common sense. Don't just have Madam Clerk sit there and read every item and make sure you have an attorney at the next caucus meeting. There was no attorney present.
Okay, Ms. Kodeski, you got 10 seconds to finish your thought, and that's it.
After fact-checking, reason behind funding cuts to Bayonne, Bayonne-Pale, which article noted, administration stated that all childcare centers were cut. This statement needs to be corrected.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
As I understand the community...
Officer, please have her...
I will continue later.
Thank you.
Obviously. El Rampador?
On the top. My name is El Rampador, 213 Avenue B. I'm with SativaCross.org. We're a 501(c)(3), advocating for cannabis patients' rights and disability rights. For many years, disabled people have been asking for online councils, online work, online school, online church, and for 19 months, disabled people got those things. But we got those things for healthy people during COVID. For 19 months, they gave those things to disabled people, and we were just along for the ride. We accepted those things, and we took them, they were given to us. And now, a lot of towns like Bayonne are taking those things away. You've got disabled vets that used to take part remotely, disabled vets that are killing themselves at a rate of 20 a day, and the answer of many towns is to take their disability access away. This was disability access. Whether you not realize it or not, a lot of ableism is going on. You don't realize what disabled people go through. Obviously, in Bayonne, we have a disconnect, because we have steps everywhere in Bayonne. I've been asking the council for years to have an ordinance to, to at least subsidize ramps for different businesses, and, and make sure that if you have one step, to have an ordinance, or if you're a new business moving into Bayonne, you have wheelchair accessibility. We have to take care of the disabled vets, and the sick and the dying. I always say, leave the 99 and go back for the 1. I always say, leave the 99 and go back for the 1. But I hope there's one day when the whole 99, the herd of 99, goes back for the 1. Right now, it's only 1 or 2 going back for the 1. We need the whole herd going back for the 1. So this meeting violates Title 2 of the ADA. You can have Mr. Coffey check this out. There's a process before you remove or make any change to disability access or rights. And whether or not you granted those rights, you did. Whether you know it or not, you gave them rights. You gave us rights. So when you do that, make changes. There's a process. And you have to have a transition period, a question-and-answer period, a grievance period. Your ADA coordinator needs to be involved in all of this stuff. These are important things. Ms. Medina, this is important stuff for disabled people. They can't take part. I know you don't feel, you feel differently. You feel you want to see the people see their face. But the conversation right before, you think people should be seen by their face. My friend took part from his deathbed. He was literally for stage 4 cancer in his deathbed, going to council meetings.
Please, please address the council, okay? Not Ms. Medina. She's not a council person.
So, my second point. I want to thank the council and everybody in Bayonne for getting the light on traffic, traffic light on 49th and Avenue C. It's a little bit safer now in Bayonne. I've seen people die. I literally, in front of my eyes when I was a kid, I saw someone die in Avenue C. So it was great. And Councilman LaPulisa, Council President LaBisse, you put in time, you put in time for that. Years ago, I know you were working on that issue too. So it's really good to see people safer, a little bit safer, not totally safe, because people disregard the lights too. There was a girl hit on 47th disregarding a light. But it's safer now, and I feel better. Now, that light would need to be also moved to 49th and Broadway, because now that, they had an accident there last week. It's very unsafe. If you've tried to pull out on 49th, going on Broadway, you'll see there's, there's issues. It's unsafe. So if we can at least get those signs, the stop for pedestrian signs on 49th and C, 49th and Broadway, that would be a good start to help people be safer there. Also, something I was made aware of, on Broadway and 53rd Street, if you want to cross the street from Walgreens to a diner, as a pedestrian, you can't. And if you want to cross from the diner to Walgreens, you can't. Go check it out yourselves. There's no sign, there's no sign light there. And if you're waiting on the diner to cross to Walgreens, you'll be waiting all day. It never changes for you. There's no button to hit. It needs to be checked out. There's probably a pole that's missing. Maybe one pole missing with the sign and a button. Just take a look. Check it out for yourself. I didn't know it was an issue. Someone brought it up to me, and I was like, okay, I'll mention it. So, but thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I also, here to, just want to echo what, what El Rampador said about the light. I wanted to thank you guys for that, for the light at 49th and C. It's super terrific. I'm also happy about that. I also wanted to mention, I'm always in Bayonne a lot, and riding by 52nd and Avenue C, that park. I noticed the other day, when I'm driving by, there was, there was a lady who, actually, she was, fortunately, she was smacking her child, and she had a cigarette in her mouth, and she's smacking her kid, and that's what caught my attention. I was like, oh, so kind of shocking. But that was mainly what was shocking, was her smacking the child. But then I noticed the cigarette in her mouth. So I just took notice to that. And then, next time I'd rolled around, you know, the next time I was coming through Bayonne, I looked at the sign out, out front. There is a sign that says, "No," I didn't take a picture of it because I was driving. It's like seven or eight things that it says on the sign. No this, this, no alcohol beverages, skateboard, and all these things. But it doesn't say, "No smoking." And being a medical cannabis patient in New Jersey, I, I know that any, all parks are breathe easy zones, and you can't smoke your cannabis. You also can't smoke cigarettes. But it doesn't say, "No smoking." So I guess she was actually in the right to be smoking. I mean, that just, you guys just check that out. You know, take a look at the sign and just consider that.
It's not on that sign. We can add it to-
Yeah. So just, just consider that input. And that was pretty much it. And I'm not here to personally address anybody or whatever, but I just, Ms. Medina, that was pretty poor conduct for the meeting.
All right. Please, please, address everything to the council.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Perez, I wanted to tell you, I didn't tell you the last time. Your team did win the championship. You will be receiving jackets with your name on it. Call me, and we'll set up a pizza party for the children. Ms. Weemer, I want to thank you for sponsoring the team at the PAL this year. I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Mayor Davis for sending us in. I'm still waiting for the rest. I'm sure I can count on everyone here. Mr. Booker, if I came a little strong on you at the last meeting, it was just me sticking up for our children. Nothing personal. I apologize to you.
Real quick, Mr. K.T. Torillo, I accept your apology. But the one thing that I have to say honestly is, sticking up for the kids, I understand. If you know anything about me, over the past 25 years, okay, I have been an advocate for the children in this town. I've worked in a high school. I worked in every grammar school. So for me not sticking up for the children, I kind of took offense to that, but I accept your apology. Thank you.
Okay. I did not plan on coming here this evening. I was at a meet and greet until I was alerted about this article that appeared in the Hudson County Review today. I'd like to straighten some of these things that were written here that are not true. Okay. It's stating that the community block grant funding, everyone was cut. That's not true. That's a blatant lie. That's not true. That's number one. Number two, we have the mayor saying that I should do my homework before I come up and speak, because I wasn't at the August meeting when the resolution was passed to give the Bayonne PAL a substantial cut money. And there's a reason behind that. Now, I want everyone to pay attention to this and follow these dates, and you'll understand why I was not here doing my job. Normally, we get our community block grant letters in early May. So what had happened is, I have a letter here from Community Block Grant, and for some strange reason, it's exactly the same as the 21. Matter of fact, that's what I received in the mail, June 3, 2021. The signature's exactly the same. It looks like the funding was whited out, and it's just a copy of an old one. All right. So it was signed, this letter was supposed to go to us. It's dated June 3, 2021. It's a typo, but it's not a typo, because it's the same letter I got last year. All right. So that means this was on the BEOF's desk on June 3. I called three times in June, and I was told, I said, "We did not receive our allocation page. We want to know what we were approved for so we could do our yearly budget." I was told it's not come before my desk. That's three times in June. Okay? July, I called twice in July. I got the same response. Hasn't come across my desk, which is kind of odd, considering we get these yearly, always in early May. Lo and behold, it was mailed, and I have the, the stamp, next to the last day in July. Didn't receive it until the 15th of September. Now, how am I supposed to be here in August when I don't get the letter until September 15? That's why when I came before you, I asked you why it wasn't on the docket. I was bewildered, little though I know the next day I get a phone call from Mr. Coffey telling me, "Well, you were approved already." Well, that's not the way it works. It's not right, okay? You follow this timeline. Something's wrong. There's something definitely wrong here. I even called in August and asked about the letter, and I was told it didn't pass, come across my desk. So if it was signed on this date, June 3, why is everyone telling me it's not coming before their, across their desk? There's a reason, and I'll reiterate it again, just like I said the last time.
But you just try and wrap it up, K.T.
Oh, come on, Gary. I just got up here. You let everyone speak. There's a lot of things-
I'm asking you just to wrap it up.
No, wrap it up. You were supposed to call me.
Everybody's supposed to-
You were supposed to call me, all right? But every time you stand and wait around for you, you go in the back and you don't come out. That's not fair to me. That's not fair to the organization. You're cutting me-
K.T., you come up here, and you give me valid excuses, right?
I'm giving you-
And I take you, I'm listening to every valid excuse you have. I can give you valid excuses why I didn't call you as well.
That's fine. That's fine.
I have a dying mother in Pennsylvania. I've been visiting. You want me to go on? I got a whole list.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. I understand that.
And I plan on sponsoring the team as well, just so you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But please wrap it up.
The problem, the thing is here, that story is false, and it came from City Hall. Not everyone got cut. And if you add up the people that got cut, it totals $9,000, and the PAL gets cut almost $8,000. So how is that fair? So the first time we lose $159,000 from the previous year, the first thing we do is we go after the children? Absolutely wrong. I hope somebody is going to answer these questions. I gave you those dates. So obviously, someone was not telling the truth. It's not possible for me to make close to 10 phone calls and tell me it doesn't come across your desk when I have it right here with the date on it. So something is wrong. It doesn't smell right. And I had no intentions of coming in and arguing about this. But when statements come out like that, I have to defend not only myself, the children. I am overwhelmed with children.
But I just want to reiterate, none of those statements were from this board.
You know, I glanced through it. I only see Mr. Carroll's name in there. I didn't have time to read it. It didn't say anything. It alluded to, I said something.
My name isn't honorable because you met me.
No, no, I didn't, not Neil. I didn't say that you came at me. Come down. Alls I said is, I read through it quickly.
Not before the desk. I don't know if it would be anybody up here, is what I'm saying. Definitely was not my quote.
Mm-hmm.
K.T., can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So the, the funding to the PAL was cut by $8,500.
Eighty-three, fifty, around there.
Okay. Call it $8,000.
No, let's call it $8,500. Sounds better.
What does that $8,500 get for you? And here's my question. What does it cost you per child on an annual basis? And how much of your grant funding, or how much of your funding overall, goes to things like salaries and expenses? How much of your total income?
Most of our, right. Most of our money that we get, we're, we're an Urban League recipient. That's where most of our money comes from. Every time a child shows up, they pay us. They pay us a fraction. Every time they feed us, it's the same thing. We-
Overall, and in general numbers, right? How much do you take in on an annual basis?
I'd have to check with the treasurer. It varies at times. We do have a budget. I'm not going to go into it right now. I have to, of course, check with the president.
I'd be very interested to know what your income is, how much of that annual income is dedicated directly to the children and the funding of activities for children, and how much is dedicated to salaries, infrastructure, and things of that nature. And this is just purely-
Well, the salaries are not paid by anything through here. That is done by, that's through the Urban League, right? They take care of that.
Right. But I'm simply asking for overall, and you're, you're a 501(c)(3). You're, the tax return is public knowledge. So-
Yeah, sure.
Certainly, we could go pull it. But, but I'm just, overall, I'm just asking if, if we, for general, right, if, if you take in $100, right, is 50% of that dedicated to the children and 50% dedicated towards salaries, infrastructure, and expenses?
It's right up there. If you pull it up, it's right up there. It's broken down by child and everything, right? This money that, that I needed this year is because I'm overwhelmed with children for homework. I need money to pay two more teachers. I don't have that much money. Teachers today, to stay after school, you have to give them $50 an hour. All right. I had to open up a second classroom again today because of the children. The severe, this money I was going to use to hire another teacher. So now I have to take someone that's in college, that's studying, to be a teacher, because most of our people that work for us have degrees. And she's becoming a teacher, so she knows exactly what to do. We're only doing, you know, it's mostly first graders to about fifth graders. The sixth, seventh, eighth grade, they don't come to homework. But it's, that's generally why it needed the money. And it throws us off, okay? You got to understand also, and he's trying time. We have more basketball teams that we're getting back to where we were in the 70s. How many times can I go to the same people for sponsorships? You know, these things add up, all right? You know, nobody wants to volunteer anymore in this world. Everyone's too busy. And I understand that. You know, I, I can't make somebody volunteer. I can't.
Right. And listen, I don't want to, I don't want to take up much of, I don't want to take up much of everybody else's time. But I, and I have some ideas that I'd be happy to-
You're more than welcome to come down. And, you know, if you call me, we could sit and we could discuss this further. I would never turn away an invitation from anybody up here. Never.
Well, I, I understand, and I appreciate talking to you.
If you could come, if you want, anytime. I'd appreciate everything.
Excuse me for coming in, but I also have a response to this. On April the, I'm sorry, October the 14th, we sent a letter out to all the nonprofits, letting them know that there was additional CDBG COVID funding.
We did not receive it.
I have a copy of the email with all the nonprofits on there. That money has to be spent. What's happening is the guidelines are being relaxed, and pretty much everything related to crises, the increase in providing services and things like that, is now being considered as COVID-related. All that HUD required of us is to get an executive summary of what that particular project might look at, look like, so that we could send it to them to approve. We have not received yours. We've got-
We're working, we're working on, on that. Of course, for that, it wasn't put to me that way when I spoke to-
But I can add the email, and I will, I will share the email with everyone. It's just, all you have to do is write out a summary of what that project would look like. We would forward that information to our regional office to get a yay or a nay from them. And pretty much it will be a yay, because like I said, gas is going up.
And they relax.
The cost of, there are more children in these programs. There are, there's a, a need, that's a need that's been, you know, just kind of put on steroids when it comes to COVID. So this money can go towards that, and you can get the dollar amount that you're requesting if you move quickly, because other, other nonprofits are coming through. And it really is a kind of a first-come, first-served basis, based on how they're releasing that and for, that money given us approval to. There are some on the council meeting today that is expedited. So I have not heard from you. Actually, has not heard from you when it comes to that executive-
I know. Ms. Howard, this is not a general attack on you. I did not, this is not, I've, I talked to you recently, and I told you what a splendid job you did. Did I not?
And you did.
This is the facts relating to the article in the paper.
Okay.
The numbers that came out has nothing to do with you. What it does, it's, no one-
This not, but no, I'm listening to you as a colleague, you know, and just letting you know that this, there's, there's literally 100% relief for you in a one-pager that you need to get to me, that you wouldn't even have to come out tonight if you've forgotten that.
Again, I will, we are working on it. The thing I'm saying is, this was not an attack on the BEOF.
And I never took it as so.
No, because I did speak to you, and our last words was, "Congratulations on the job. Well done." It was me, you, Jay Coffey, correct?
Yep. But again, like I say, I'm trying to get back to what it is, you know, the answer to your problem. The root cause here is, is you need money. There is money to be had, and, and it comes, it, some of these things are so simple. Like I say, all HUD is asking for is a one-pager, and next month, you can have the dollar amount based on their approval of it. That's all I'm asking.
Right. I was just stating the facts that was, was in the article in the paper today. It had nothing to do with that.
But Ms. Howard, that's a wonderful resolution. Thank you for sharing that.
But this still does not make sense. It doesn't.
Thank you, K.T.
Thank you for your time. I'm not going to wait for you this time, Gary.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Oh, 5 is an ordinance for introduction. It is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general order- It is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 21, health regulations, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 9th, and adorning E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It is, resolution is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Oh, six is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a declaration of a sidewalk easement from 22nd Street Bayonne Owner LLC to the City of Bayonne relative to the block 451, Lot 1.01, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 9th, as a time and place for a public hearing for, and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Oh, seven has been withdrawn once again. Oh, eight is moved by the council as a whole. It is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 9th, and adorning E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Oh, nine is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 9th, and adorning E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. The resolution is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Oh, nine also has an addendum which I am going to read at the end of the meeting. Had to be separated. It's a two-part form to oh nine. Oh, 10 is for introduction, is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, November 9th, and adorning E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It, deleting nine restrictive parking zones. The resolution is moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Consent agenda is moved by the council as a whole. It covers C1 through C7, and it orders the following communications to be received and filed. Any questions on the communications? Which one?
C7.
Okay. Okay, let me take a vote on C1 through C6 first, and then we'll get to you. So it's on the communications, C1 through three, six, C6. Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Uh, there's a question on C7.
Can somebody give a brief synopsis of the report from our auditors?
Do you want to do that, Ms. Mao?
Give a brief synopsis of the audit.
It's.
Well, I think Mr. La Paluza. I'm not asking you, Ms. Mao. I'm asking our president.
Sure. Um, the audit basically, uh, it's, uh, required contracts and agreements required to be advertised. I'm going through the general comments, which were at the end, and, um.
Can you speak a little louder?
So it goes over a number of different things. It goes over the threshold amount, uh, as adjusted by the governor, is $40,000, as opposed to the, uh, sum that used to be $17,500, which was a contract to be awarded by a purchasing agent or other employee. Uh, it talks about, um, those expenditures within the $40,000 within the fiscal year. And it also talks about, uh, the bids that were requested by public advertisement and contract awards for 2019 roadway improvements, Newark Bay Waterfront Access Project, Veterans Park, 25th Street, City Hall Bathroom Renovations, Rock Salt City Streets, Sergeant James J. Shea, Memorial Shooting Range Roof Reconstruction, Pedestrian Intersection Improvements on Avenue E. 34th and 35th Street. Talks about different payments, change orders exceeding 20% of originally awarded contract price. The city has certified in its 2019 budget of orders which exceeded 20% of the originally awarded contract. Expenditure less than bid threshold, but 15% or more of that amount per NJSA 48:11-6. Collection of interest on delinquent taxes and assessments, delinquent taxes and tax title liens, contracts and agreements accepted from public advertisement for bids. And that's pretty much it. The comments and recommendations portion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on C7? And on C7, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Officers' reports is moved by the council as a whole. It covers OR1 through OR4. There's a resolution ordering the following communications to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. Any questions on the officers' reports? Which one?
OR2 and OR4.
And on OR1 and 3, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Oh, R2 is from the purchasing agent reporting on bids received for the improvements to the Broadway Phase 1, which were received on October 14th, and there were five bidders on such property. Do you have a question? For such project, I should say.
Can you please explain what Broadway improvements to Broadway Phase 1 will be?
Sure. Tommy, do you want to explain that?
Yes. Can Gary? That is, we are looking into paving Broadway. Um, we're going to start from city line and work our way down. So what we went out to bid for would get us approximately from city line to 40th Street, repaving Broadway, which would be done this year.
To 40th Street? That's Phase 1?
That's Phase 1, yeah.
Just paving?
Just paving, yep. Repaving Broadway.
Okay. And did we make a decision on who the bidder was?
Um, yeah, that's, that's, uh, coming up, I think it was Blackrock.
Okay.
I believe it was Blackrock. There was five bidders, um, and they were the low bidder.
Thank you, Director.
And on OR2, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Oh, R4 is from the purchasing agent reporting on bids received for the liner replacement at the G. Thomas D. Domenico Municipal Pool, which were received on October 7th. There was one bidder.
Who was the winning bid? Are we going to go with them? Is the price right?
Um.
Do we have to rebid?
No, uh, I don't think we're going to rebid it. Uh, I think it's going to be awarded to Aquatic Renovations from Indiana.
Indiana?
That's the pool placed that bid on. I believe, I believe they had put the liner in before.
Originally?
Originally, yes. And the type of liner that we have, the system, it's a steel pool with fiberglass, and then a liner over it. So there, I don't know if there's many places that do it. Maybe that's why we only receive.
Is there a warranty that comes with it, Director?
Um, there warranty on it. I didn't get that yet. They didn't sign the contract, um, but.
Will there be a warranty?
Their liner has lasted us 17 years. They usually guarantee them for 10 to 12 years. I don't know what their, that was previous. So we went five years past with that, so I think their liner is pretty good product if we went five.
And I know Amy agrees with the price, but do you agree with the price? How much is it costing us? Thank you, Director.
And on OR4, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
Consent agenda for resolutions is moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the final resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR1 through CR18. Which ones?
Um, CR5, 9, 11, 15, 16.
15, 16, you said?
5, 9, 11, 15, and 16. Get a nail.
And any other questions on the consent resolutions? On the remaining consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
R5 is authorizing a warrant payable to Royal Printing Services of West New York, New Jersey, for the printing of 2022 primary election ballot in the amount of $31,910.45.
I'd just like to know, why do we go out of city for this when we have printers right here in Bayonne? Is it a, is it a ordinance? Is it something we have to do?
It is a portion of the county. The county has them as a whole. They're their printers. That's who they hire, and then we pay our portion of it. Every city pays a portion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on CR5? And on CR5, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
CR9 authorizes the mayor to accept a 2022 Older Americans Act, 1965 grant, in the amount of $83,610, and certifying a matching fund of 25% in the amount of $20,902.50.
Just want to know, what would that include? Maybe, uh, somebody can explain what this will entail for our senior citizens?
Yeah.
Maybe, Ms. Howard? Do you know anything about the, uh?
This actually funds our Office on Aging for the city. We get the money from the county. Every year, we get this grant money from the county, usually three times a year, and it goes to fund the, um, Office on Aging for the city.
For what services?
For all the services that they perform. If you look at the budget, their budget's minimal. It's only like $24,000 for the operating expenses, because it's all covered through grants.
Okay, is this advertised for the senior citizens, so they know that there are things available? Like, instead of them coming, asking? Is it, is it advertised in the paper that these are the services that we have grant money for? Please stop by Officer Aging for more information?
I believe the whole Office on Aging is funded through grants, so yes, I, they advertise.
Okay.
They have to do all the reporting and report to the county and account for everything that they spend.
Thank you.
And on CR9, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
CR11 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement, amendment to the agreement, number CY20-083 with the Waterfront Project, Inc., to provide CDBG COVID funds for housing counseling and legal advocacy expansion program in the amount of $45,000, increasing the same in the amount of $700, $75,000 to cover additional housing counseling and social work.
You're on.
Yeah, so this is the exact example I was just giving Mr., uh, to, um, Mr. Terello in regards to that. Waterfront Project gave an amazing demonstration of what COVID is doing to our residents in Bayonne. Some of them lost their jobs as a result of COVID layoffs, and they are underemployed. That didn't mean the quality of life decreased, so they need assistance as far as trying not to be evicted. Some of them are dealing with long COVID, and their hospital bills are absorbing a great deal of their budget. Again, it's affecting their quality of life, potentially being evicted, no food, things such as that. Um, they highlighted moms and dads that broke up. Kids are, you know, going against the parents because they have this resentment and the type of canceling that they gave. Waterfront Project gave a wonderful demonstration. There are currently 80 people in the, from the City of Bayonne that Waterfront Project is representing. So this money will be very, very well spent on to continue to help mitigate the fallout from the COVID crisis.
Can we do more than 80 people?
Uh, we, well, they come in on an as-need basis. I'm sure as the evictions and the courts open up even more so, it will be even more. So yes, we will do more than 80 people, but that is currently who they have in, as far as clientele right now. And the income qualifying, that this is low-income individuals that qualify for CDBG.
Ms. Howard, with all due respect, how do people find out about this? They have to come to you first?
The court, they, I'm sure the courts are referring them to the waterfront. Definitely, they come to us because they seek rental assistance through our program. If it's something that we feel like they need additional guidance or canceling legal services, which we cannot provide at the BEOF, we refer them to the Waterfront Project.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Ms. Howard.
Thank you very much, sir.
And on CR11, Mr. Booker.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Weimer.
Hi.
Mr. La Paluza.
Hi.
CR15 is authorizing the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation to allocate and administer funds consistent with their food distribution program to the community.
Can you explain how people know about this? This is very important.
This is important. I'm going to ask, Donna, is this what you and I were discussing? Okay, so this is, um, funding that started as the Bayonne for Bayonne Initiative during the peak of the COVID crisis. That money was gathered from the people of Bayonne, who wanted to give something, um, back to the community, you know, for those who were in need. As the nonprofit, we received that money to be delved out in a particular way. Seems that that process went by the wayside. But in order to honor what people wanted that money to go towards, the BEOF, and Donna Mao is going to return that dollar amount back to us, we're going to reach out to food pantries, 501(c)(3)'s throughout the City of Bayonne, and give them a dollar amount, um, till we delve this money completely out in the way of a grant, so that they can get the food in the community, again, to mitigate the ongoing food insecurities that's going on in the City of Bayonne, and they will expend this dollar amount. We will give this to them in a reimbursement capacity. And that speaks to the foundation part of the BEOF.
Okay, will this be controlled and, 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 you know, looked after to make certain that it's being used for that purpose?
I promise you.
And it will be in Bayonne?
It will be, it will be all Bayonne, because the initial initiative was Bayonne for Bayonne. We will definitely reach out to the Bayonne 501(c)(3) nonprofits. Um, they will give us, they will have to expend the dollar amount first and submit to us their expenditure reports, at which we will turn around and reimburse them that dollar amount that they have expended. Base, and it's going to be awarded. So let's just say, for instance, if this is $100, and I have 100 nonprofits, each nonprofit will get a dollar, you, so you, till it's all gone. And then whatever that dollar amount is, they, they will know upfront what their award is going to be.
How much, how much is in the kitty currently?
Um, I think, um, I don't have it in front of me, but I think, but when we get the money back from you, it's going to be about $17,000.
Okay, so United Salvo Palsy, if they give food out?
Um, we are, we are specifically targeting food pantries.
Food pantries?
Food pantries, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
In Bayonne?
In Bayonne.
Thank you.
And I, and I will, I told Donna that I would care, share with her that full expenditure report once we have that completed, so that she can have a copy for her records.
And this is separate from the Grab and Go food program, correct?
This is separate from the Grab and Go.
And Thanksgiving would be separate?
Yes, this is all separate.
Separate. Thank you very much.
And on CR fifteen, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
And Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
CR sixteen is accepting the fiscal year 2022 Click It or Ticket grant in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred dollars from the New Jersey Department of Highway and Traffic Safety.
Director Colbert, can you explain what this money's gonna be used for?
The chief is coming.
Chief, sorry, chief.
Good evening, Council. This, this money is used to educate, encourage the use of seat belts, and enforcement as well.
So it will be used for enforcement?
Right.
With all the traffic issues and accidents in Bayonne?
Yeah, we, and we'll have to justify to the state that we used it specifically for, uh, seat belts.
Okay, do you go to the schools and, and show them what a seat belt can do?
We do, we have AAA come in, and they have a program that we partner with them with, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, chief.
And on CR sixteen, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R one is affirming that the council members have read at a minimum the comments and recommendations sections of the calendar year 2021 audit and an affidavit certifying that they have done so. Would like to move it?
Move it. Second.
Second.
Just gonna take a quick second. Signatures? You certify that you read at the minimum? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R two authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to purchase one Spartan Metro Star fire engine from Spartan Motors USA through the Houston-Gallison Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Plan for a total of five hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Would like to move it?
Some of.
Any questions on R two?
I think I'll comment. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay, I'll follow up.
No problem.
I do want to comment that Community Development Block Grant is purchasing this fire engine, um, for the city of Bayonne. Um, this is, this came as a result of, and, and I've had several inquiries about, you know, different things related to this, and I learned today that forty-five years ago, when the Community Development Block Grant was created, there was fund, existing programs out there that required the purchase of fire department equipment through that, and there was gonna be an elimination of that, but the protests at the time required that CDBG funding be used for the purchase of fire engines and apparatuses and things such as that. So as a result here today, this is gonna be coming from the Community Development Block Grant.
Very nice. Excellent.
And on that, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
I think that's excellent, by the way. Good use of grant money, and I vote aye.
R three is approving Chapter one fifty-nine, number two, in the calendar year 2022 budget, seeking permission of the Division of Local Government Services to improve the insertion of items of revenue. Any questions on R three?
What is the item being inserted?
That was all the grants in the CRs.
Oh, okay, okay.
Gotcha.
Who'd like to move it?
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R four is authorizing amendment to the agreement number CY twenty-two oh one, oh ten with Runeman and Roth LLC for professional legal services as, as labor attorneys, increasing said amount of seventy thousand dollars, making the total amount not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Who'd like to move it?
Some of.
In a second?
Why are we keep paying out this kind of money to outside attorneys? Wouldn't it have been a lot cheaper if we settled these complaints against the city? This is ridiculous. How many more complaints do we have that we have to increase the contract? Dollar amount?
I don't know if they're necessarily more or just an extension of what's already there.
Council President, if you wouldn't mind. So this is.
Excuse me, who are you?
I'm Joe Skelander. I'm a lawyer with the city of Bayonne.
Are you taking over for Mr. Coffey?
In this instance of tonight, yes.
Just tonight?
For tonight, yes.
Okay, well, it's a pleasure to meet you. Sorry you weren't introduced properly.
Thank you. But to this item, this is, again, to reflect the amount of additional work being done in connection with the investigations so that the city of Bayonne can protect its rights as a, you know, a municipality.
This is going on and on and on and on and on, guys. Come on. Let's get the code of ethics going. Let's get some training going so we don't have to pay attorneys left and right and left and right and left and right. It's ridiculous.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R five is amending agreement number CY twenty-two dash eleven to Chason, Lamborello, Malone, and Capuzo for the professional legal services in connection with the state tax court tax appeals, increasing same in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, making the total contract amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second. And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R six, I have no paperwork on, so I'm gonna assume it's been removed.
It's on me, it's on.
I have no paperwork, I have no resolution. Can't move anything I don't have. R seven is approving submittal of the NJDOT Transportation Alternative Application for the pedestrian bridge connecting the South Cove Commons and Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor. Who'd like to move it?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Gail's got a question.
Ms. Kuduski.
What is this about? What is, and the alternative application? Weren't they going through some sort of safety check with the DOT, et cetera?
Mr. Skelander?
Uh, we have our planner, you know, Sue Mack, who's willing to speak on this.
This has nothing to do with our Twenty-Fifth Street Walk Bridge from Prospect to Avenue E or the Thirty-Second Street Bridge? This is the new bridge?
No, this is not. So, um, hi, Gail, how are you? Good. The city aggressively applies for all grant solicitations that anybody puts out. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, Transportation Alternatives, uh, application was solicited, and we did apply. We were not successful. It's a highly competitive project. Uh, this transportation alternatives is just that. Bikeways, walkways, um, it's not something that normally would have any vehicles on it, so DOT sets aside some money for other things, alternative projects. And, uh, this project is very interesting. It would be a pedestrian way connecting South Cove, which is a shopping center, to the Peninsula Bayonne Harbor, which is Moppy, basically, where we have a number of residential units. But right now, if you wanna go to South Cove to utilize the stores, you have to come out, you either have to drive, which we don't want more cars on, on the highway there, or you, you have to walk that little, that little sidewalk that connects them now. This would, this would allow us to build a nice pedestrian walkway. It would be like a wooden walkway, and it would connect them, and people would be able to walk back and forth.
That's gonna go over that piece of water?
It would go over the mud flats, which, as you know, most of the day, we are covering mud, in, in, yes, in, in any way, but just parallel to, just east of four forty, more there. Um, it has.
With all due respect, sue, I, I appreciate that. However, we have three bridge, bridges that need to be done. The one over four forty, the Twenty-Fifth Street Walk Bridge from Prospect over Avenue E, and the Thirty-Second Street Bridge. What's going on with that?
I, I will tell you what I know about those. First of all, this funding source that we're applying for does not cover vehicular bridges. It doesn't cover those bridges. It's very specific. It's, um, the highest estimate.
Twenty-Fifth Street Bridges and vehicular walkway?
I'm trying to explain the parameters of this grant. This grant, the, um, the, you can apply for one point five million dollars. That is the, that is the total amount that is allocated to any city for that, which is a very low amount in order to build a bridge. Uh, you and I haven't really had a chance to talk much lately, but, but you've, you really are a champion for all bridges. The Thirty-Fourth Street Bridge, which is the pedestrian walkway over Route four forty, um, that was awarded to teaming, um, engineers in, in September. Uh, they started their, they started their concept planning, um, and they will come back to the city council with an alternative to build that bridge, which is, they're working for DOT on this. They'll be back here. I have, I have a citizens' um, a public relations plan that we're going to put up on the website, I believe, after it's reviewed by the council. They'll have their first public meeting here in December, and they'll have an alternatives analysis done for the council to review in May of this year. Once the council looks at that and the public looks at that, the next phase will be to do the planning and engineering, uh, and then we will be able to, the, the nice thing about this is they can prepare, prepare the bid documents, and then we'll be able to go to bid to finally build that walkway, which is a walkway, as you said, over Route four forty. The Thirty-Second Street Bridge, which is also something that you've been very interested in, um, that is a vehicular bridge owned by New Jersey Transit, um, not owned by the city of Bayonne, and, uh, New Jersey Transit inherited it. They, you know, they didn't own it originally. DOT came out and said it goes over the light rail, so we're gonna assign it to New Jersey Transit. Uh, New Jersey Transit has sent us in a Dropbox all the records on that, and the mayor is preparing a letter to the Commissioner of Transportation, whose name is Danyan Gurar Sikketti, who is also the Chairwoman of New Jersey Transit, and Kevin Corbett. I believe the letter is being prepared now and will go to them, asking if New Jersey Transit, because there is some money available from the federal government now, if they would sponsor with the city. The city can't apply because we don't own it, but the city can request based on concerns that you've expressed and other people have expressed, Jersey, the police department also.
If you don't own it, why do we have to pay for it? Shouldn't it just like New Jersey Transit?
No, I, I, what I'm saying to you is we're requesting that we ask them to let us sponsor with them. Uh, New Jersey Transit can't come in and do a project in a town without the town's permission, so the mayor has requested that a letter be sent to the commissioner. I believe there's also gonna try to be a meeting to say, listen, we really need this bridge done. This is a very important bridge for us. Thirty-Fourth Street's covered now. The mayor's trying to get Thirty-Second Street done, and then the Twenty-Fifth Street Bridge, Tommy, I think you have more information on that and then involved in that.
I believe they're waiting on approval from Conrail right now, and the mayor's working on, uh, dealing with Conrail to get that moving. The contractor's, um, aware of what's going on, and he's getting ready to move on that.
Right.
There should be some movement on that, I guess, within the next few weeks.
In the next few weeks, not the next few months.
No, with Conrail giving us access to get across the bridge.
Ms. Mack, thank you. Director, thank you.
Thank you.
On R seven, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R eight is designating Bridgepoint Bayonne LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at sixty-three, sixty-three dash sixty-seven New Hook Road, which is identified as block four sixteen, lot one, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, and authorizing the preparation and negotiation of a redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of said property. Who'd like to move it?
I'll move.
One second. Gail's got a question.
What is this property going to be? Please?
Council President, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, so, uh.
Right now, we're, uh, in the midst of negotiating a redevelopment agreement. This will allow us to enter and negotiate with the developer and his counsel as to what property. Uh, the counsel is also present in the, uh, audience, and he could speak on more of the details if you would like.
Industrial, residential, what kind of property?
Uh, yes.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Matthew Passata from Sales, Commerce, and Gross, and I represent the developer, Bridge Development LLC. Uh, what they're looking to do here is propose a warehouse development at the subject site, which is a permitted use pursuant to the sixty-three to sixty-seven redevelopment plan. But as a prerequisite, before you can be heard before the planning board, the redevelopment plan requires a submission to be designated redeveloper, and then to enter into a redevelopment agreement prior to having your hearing before the planning board, which is obviously going to be a public hearing.
What type of warehousing?
It's gonna be a warehouse for a total of three hundred fifty thousand square feet with office space. As far as the tenant goes, we don't know that today.
So it's gonna be a warehouse with office space, but you don't know what kind of warehousing it's going to be?
We don't know who the tenant's going to be.
You don't know who the tenant's going to be?
Correct.
So to the council, studies need to be done. Make sure before you approve anything that goes through the planning and goes through the zoning, that the traffic studies are done, the impact studies are all done, before you come here and approve or disapprove it. And remember, you have your own voice. It was shown here today, with KT being able to go back and forth with people, but when other people ask questions, I get a cop to have me removed from the podium.
I was very generous with you.
Thank you, sir.
Very, very generous with you.
On R eight, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
R nine is adopting the corrective action plan in response to the calendar year 2021 audit. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
One second?
Second.
Mr. Lappalusa, what's the corrective action plan?
The corrective action plan is to make compliance. Did you wanna add?
Nope, nope. You signed and certified. You read the audit report. I want it from you.
Excuse me. Don't demand things from me. I will give you what I'm going to give you. And if I need help to explaining it from one of the people who work in that department, I will ask them for it. They give us the report. The report talks about internal control over financial reporting?
I'm talking about the corrective action report, Mr. President.
This is the corrective action plan.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you going to interrupt me again, or can I finish?
I'm listening.
They talk about compliance, and they talk about, uh, the purpose and the responsibility of overlooking these things. Talk about the federal. Talk about the federal programs and the community block grant, and how we should take that money and use that in the correct way.
So we're not using it in the correct way?
No, but it's, this is, what they're saying is that sometimes we can do, we can tighten up that area and make that better.
And what about compliance? What are we not doing compliantly?
Again, I think what they're talking about here is the requirements of the compliance, and these changes happen all the time. So there's changes to the compliance.
But it's a corrective action plan, so it's something that was done that wasn't being done the way the auditors wanted it to be done. If, Gary, if I could-
Yes.
Because the corrective action plan is not a part of the audit. It's required by the CFO as a response to the comments written in the audit. So I have to put together a plan and submit it to the state to show them how we've either corrected it, or we are going to correct it. And of the comments that were written up, all of them were corrected, because keep in mind, this is from last year's audit. So by the time this plan comes out, most of the stuff we found already, and we'll take care of it. Is the corrective action plan that you put in place, Ms. Mauer, is that available to the public? Yes. It is? Where do I get a copy of it? I could post it on the website after I file it. Okay, so you didn't file it yet? No, it has to be approved by the council. Once the council approves it, then I file it with the Division of Local Government Services, and then I could post it on the website.
And everything's listed for calendar year 2021?
Correct. As soon as the council, once the council approves it tonight and I get it back from the clerk, as approved, we could put it on the website. Thank you very much. Very welcome.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 10 is a resolution requesting the Director of Local Government Services to make changes in the title and text in the calendar 2022 budget. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
One second. Skadaski has a question.
I just want to know, who is the Director of Local Government Services?
And what is the change in title? This is a requirement anytime you make a change in the budget. So in the budget, we create a line called Matching Funds for Grants and put money in there in anticipation of any grants coming in after the budget's adopted. So whenever we get a matching fund from grant, I have to do what they call a change title and text, and change the name from Matching Fund to Grant, and put it against the actual grant that we are accepting. Okay, so are you the Director of Local Government Services? That's the state. These are both state requirements. Okay. Thank you.
And on R. 10, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Stepped out.
He stepped out.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 11 has been withdrawn. R. 12 is authorizing the city of Bayonne and the Bayonne Board of Education to enter into a interlocal services agreement for the use of garbage and recycle removing.
I'll move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Booker, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll is absent. Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 13 is awarding the contract for the liner replacement at the G. Thomas D. Dominican Municipal Pool to Aquatic Renovation Systems, Inc., from Indianapolis, Indiana, for the bid price of $172,120.
I'll move.
One second. On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 14 is awarding the contract for the improvements to the Bayonne Phase 1, 2, Blackrock Enterprise LLC, for the bid price of $446,049.25.
I'll move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
The remainder of these are on the agenda as reserving space, so they don't have our numbers consistently. First one is awarding the contract for professional legal services in connection with federal and state grants and funding for a period commencing January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023, and it is awarded to Crivitt &amp; Crivitt, PC of Washington, DC, for a contract amount not to exceed $120,000.
Move it.
I don't know what meeting it was, but you all agreed not to have add-ons prior to the meeting, and I understand all these add-ons, reserved space, was just done today, right before the meeting.
I believe this was done at the caucus.
Why are you still doing this?
It was done at the caucus.
Not all of them. Not all of them. It was not done at the caucus.
Which ones were not done at the caucus?
I don't have my notes, Neil, honestly.
You said at the caucus, we do these things for reasons.
But you don't, I mean, that was a week-
To add these things on, they were done at the caucus.
Respectfully, Neil, that was a week ago. These should have been put here and numbered and taken care of. This is ridiculous. Totally ridiculous.
They're not add-ons, as you say.
They are add-ons.
They're not. They were reserved.
Ken-
Space was reserved.
The name of the person that were given professional legal services is not on this, so it must have just been given to Madam Clerk before the meeting. There's no name here. So don't tell me it was already set at the caucus, when it should have been, the name of the profession should have been put here. Come on, guys. I don't like to be talked to like a child and told me to be quiet and listen. I'm not a child. And I'm not here to waste your time or mine. The public needs to know about these things. They have a right to know. So who, what is this service for? Don't we already pay somebody to do grants? You've got grants and funding, so don't we already pay two companies?
Gail, this particular company has been doing it for over 30 years, Crivitt &amp; Crivitt.
Right, but it's not written here. That's why I had it circled to ask a question, Madam Clerk.
There are grant writers, and they work in Washington.
I understand that, but the name of the professional was not listed on our copy. So I did not know it was the ones that we're having now. Thank you.
What will be, R. 16 is awarding the contract for the redevelopment and land use attorney in connection with the developers and redevelopments for a period of January, one year commencing January 1 through December 31. This contract is awarded to Inglesino Webster, which is Scala and Taylor LLC, from Precipity, New Jersey, for an amount not to exceed $150,000. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
And I didn't take a vote on R. 15. Let's double back. On R. 15, for the legal services for the grants, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 16 now, we will take a vote on, which is for the developers and redevelopment and land use attorney.
Move it.
Got that. And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 17 is a contract awarded for professional legal services as bond counsel for a period of one year commencing January 1, and this contract is awarded to Archer's Attorney, Archer &amp; Griner, PC of Hackensack, New Jersey, for a contract amount not to exceed $100,000 for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2023. Would like to move it?
Move it. Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 18 is a contract awarding, awarding contract for municipal tax attorney to Jason Lamborello Malone and Capuzzo, PC of Secaucus, New Jersey, to act as a municipal tax attorney for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2023, for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, which one was that you just read?
That's for the municipal tax attorney.
That's all the way down.
You have to go down four.
There are other ones that weren't read.
Well, I'm taking them in the order that they were given to me.
There's three that were not read.
Which means they may not have been awarded.
Thank you.
Who'd like to move it?
I'll move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 19 is awarding the contract to Anthony R. Suarez of Hackensack, New Jersey, for to act as the rent control attorney for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2023, for a contract amount not to exceed $15,000. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Who was the award to again?
Anthony Suarez.
Suarez, okay, all right.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 20. R. 20 is awarding the contract to Richard Campusano to act as zoning board attorney for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2023, for a contract amount not to exceed $22,000.
I'll move.
And on R. 20, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Two of the same contracts here. R. 21 is awarding the contract for labor attorney to Rutterman Roth LLC of Springfield, New Jersey, for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2023, for a contract amount not to exceed $100,000.
I'll move.
Ms. Skadaski has a question.
Didn't we just, didn't you just approve a labor, labor attorney? Why two?
Amendment.
That contract was for the continuance for this year. This would be for next year.
And it's the same attorney? Are we anticipating more lawsuits? We can't get this settled in 2022? We have to move into 2023 with all this?
All these lawyers would be for, of us hiring-
I'm not talking about development lawyers and zoning lawyers. I'm talking about the labor lawyers. Why do we need them? Are we anticipating more lawsuits regarding labor in 2023? We can't settle?
It goes by an hourly rate. You don't necessarily need them, but you have to have a contract with them in case you do need them. So we don't know what's coming up in the next year.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 22 is appointing panel counsel for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2023, and it's for various different attorneys to act as special legal counsel to the city of Bayonne from time to time under the fair and open contracting requirements. Who'd like to move it?
Hey, who have a question?
Let me get it moved in a second, and then we'll-
Sure.
Who'd like to move it?
Move.
Go ahead, Ms. Skadaski.
Sorry, why do we need a panel counsel? What's the function, the purpose? We have so many attorneys employed by the city. We're rendering out our city. We're rendering out the legal department. Why do we need a panel counsel?
Mr. Skelander?
Part of that is just with the different various councils and committees that the city of Bayonne has, such as the Historical Commission, Rent Control. Again, these are just open contracts that would be for lawyers in case, in the event of other lawyers are being used for those services at the time for those meetings.
I'm sorry?
They would be used for, the use of the services for these contracts would be in the event that lawyers from the law department are unavailable to meet, you know, at these different board meetings.
Or have a conflict.
Or have a conflict.
It makes no sense. It has no logic. We have attorneys up the gauze, and you mean to tell me that somebody in the law department can't help another attorney who's being paid by the city if there is a conflict?
Not if they have a conflict. If they have a conflict, the rules of ethics that govern the profession of lawyers, you know, dictate that they have to recuse themselves from that case, and that's therefore other counsel to represent the city's interests and the boards, you know, have to have a lawyer that would not be conflicted.
I have a question for the president. Did we ever have a panel counsel before? I've never seen a panel counsel on any agenda that was approved.
I think panel, you know, a panel counsel is a general term where the attorney would not be specifically-
I'm sorry, I can't, can you use your microphone, please?
Sure. Panel counsel is used as a general term, which is not specifically designated to be labor, development. It's in the event-
It's a jack-of-all-trades?
Not-
When it comes to certain aspects?
Not in jack-of-all-trades. If, if any of the attorneys that are being designated either have a conflict, we don't know what's coming up. So what happens is you have to have somebody in reserve. It's like having a bullpen. You have an attorney in a bullpen in case you need to call them up and you need to use them, because if we don't give them authority to be retained at this time, then you have to wait for the council meeting in order for that, you know, to go through. So this is something, it's not out of the ordinary, and it's not something that we haven't done, at least in the 19 years that I've been here. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to use them. They're just there in the bullpen.
I've never seen panel counsel on an agenda in all the years I've been coming here.
It was termed differently.
Yeah, the terminology is definitely different.
It's always been panel counsel.
Thank you.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
R. 23, which is going to be R. 23, is awarding the contract for special redevelopment and land use attorneys on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January 1. The contract is awarded to McManaman Scotland &amp; Baumann for a contract amount not to exceed $75,000. Who'd like to move it?
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
I'm, I'm sorry. So how is that different than the contract that was awarded several prior for redevelopment and land use?
Those were skipped.
No, one is for the redevelopers.
With, with the contract that was awarded for R sixteen, the difference between this one, in, in the event there is a conflict with one firm, there's another firm that's already in place that specializes in handling, you know, redevelopment and land use. With this one, this also allows the ability to award just in case if another firm has, you know, that firm has a conflict.
I understand. And when we award these contracts, are they in effect retainers that are paid, or are they, as we say, space reservers? So if the need should arise, they bill us hourly, and we pay the hourly rate?
They bill us hourly, and we pay the hourly rate. There is no retainer upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-four is awarding the contract for professional medical services for uniform employees for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first. It is awarded to Dr. John T. De Deuses for an a contract amount of fifty-two thousand dollars.
I'll move.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
It is, next one, R twenty-five. Will be twenty-five is awarding the contract for the architect in connection with the CIDS land use ordinance compliance. It is awarded to USA Architects of Somerville, New Jersey, for a period commencing November first through October thirty-first, 2023, for a amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Ms. Skuduski.
What do we have plans for the CIDS? Why do we need an architect?
Well, again, an architect, I don't know what the plan is, but you need to have a contract with one for when you need a design.
I can answer that.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so, so, Gail, in the CIDS, CIDS, when you use CIDS monies to do improvements to the facades or whatever.
I know all that, uh-huh.
Right? There's only, there are, you know, regulations in place that you need a CIDS architect who's familiar with the CIDS regulations to make sure that when the city funds, when you use CIDS grants to fund those improvements, that it complies with the CIDS regulations. This particular architect, who's been working with the city for, for, I understand, several years, he's like the expert on the CIDS regulation. So this is not anything that's going to cost the city any money. All his fees are taken, you know, are charged, you know, through the, you know, the CIDS funding.
I don't think we've really done any, any improvements in CIDS in a long time. Thank you.
Doesn't mean we're not, doesn't mean you're paying people. It means you have, you have, you're building your bullpen, and you're making do things so much.
I understand. Thank you.
And who'd like to move that?
I'll move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-six is awarding the contract for professional mental health services for employee assistant program for a period of one year commencing January first. It is awarded to Hudson Health Employees Assistant LLC of Bayonne, New Jersey, and the contract amount is not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars. Who'd like to move it?
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
And Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And I do have two that is added on to the agenda. First is to amend the resolution twenty-one dash twelve dash fifteen oh thirty-five, which adopted the annual meeting schedule for 2022, to change the time of the November second council meeting, caucus, council caucus from seven PM to eight thirty PM due to a conflict with early voting. Who'd like to move it?
I'll move.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And the last one I have is the separation of oh nine, which is the second part of the ordinance for introduction and a resolution fixing November ninth as time and place for a public hearing. This is amending section seven dash eleven. Who'd like to move that?
I'll move.
Question?
Yes, could I just, do you have a list of the, the panel attorneys that were approved in case you needed them?
Yep. I can get that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, we can get that.
You'll email them to me, please?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And on the last one, two, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And if there is nothing else?
I wish everybody a happy Halloween.